Welcome everyone to the Board of Education meeting this evening. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we'd like to offer a moment of silence for the recent and horrific death of George Floyd and for the lives lost in the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you. May I have an approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
I have Ted second. Kim? Ted and Kim, any questions, edits?
No.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. And may I have an approval of the minutes from May 26, please? I have Renee and Irene. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, public comment. As you will know, we have two links when you enter the board meeting online. One is to participate in public comment session and one to watch and listen to the board meeting. Anyone who is entering into public comment will call you by name. And if you could start by just giving us your address and we'll allow a three-minute maximum to ask your question. Once you've finished, you'll have to exit out of the public comment link and go back into the meeting to watch. Okay.
Amy, if I could just add,
Yeah.
it would probably be so, if you're in public comment, stay on until you hear your response and then click out and go back into the general link.
Perfect. And Matt, I'm going to call on you to let us know when we have anybody.
We've got two people. I'm going to let the first person in and it is Maya. Joining now.
Maya?
Hi, everyone. How are you?
How are you?
I'm doing okay. How are you?
Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you so much for having me.
Just give us your street address before you begin.
Sure. It once was Six Chester Brook Lane, Pittsburgh, New York, 14534. Just off of Coffins Road. Although it's been, it's been a little bit. I'm now in Brooklyn. Should I give you my, I can, I'm happy to give you my Brooklyn address if that's easier as well.
I think it's fine. Deb, are you okay with the old address?
Oh, sure. I love that house.
It is. I just didn't get it. What was the street name or the address again?
Six Chester Brook Lane, C-H-E-S-T-E-R-B-R-O-K.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Go ahead, Maya.
Sure. So I'm a little nervous. So I wrote down what I thought I would say if that might make it easier. But, okay, my name is Maya Wulacham. Thank you for having me. I am a graduate of Pittsburgh Sutherland High School. I grew up in Pittsburgh. I was in the choir and the jazz choir and the orchestra and all the musicals and all the plays and student council and also on the track team and all the things. I graduated in 2009. I went on to college and I graduated with my master's degree from MIT just last year. I say all those things to say that as a part of the community, I know all of the ways that it changed me for the better. And it's part of the reason that it pained me so much to see quite a few days pass between the pain of the past few days and a response from PCSD. Mostly because every single one of those days was really full of pain for me and every black person that I had ever known and any community that had been affected and any community that had cared for those who grieved. And it silenced hurt a lot because it reinforced a lot about how I felt as a kid that even though I would try really hard, that sometimes our beautiful community might not consider me one of its own. And it wouldn't see that same humanity in so many other kids of color who may not have to be on student council and on the track team and on the musicals and all of those things to also matter too. So I spent the past week reconnecting with so many of my Pittsburgh friends who reached out to me this week to see if I was okay and acknowledged their commitment to learning and unlearning. And it made me wonder how that could be when we graduated from some of the best schools in the country and how we might have failed in our mandate to teach. I was really, and so were my classmates, a little disappointed that though we had been to so many of the best schools, so many folks did not know that racism had helped build our world or had recognized that having five black graduate students as I was in 2009 was an exception, but not necessarily exceptional. So I say all this to say, to give context to a conversation that happened on Twitter earlier this week that spurred so many great conversations with parents and students and teachers and other community members about why we had not invited essential conversations about structural racism into our classrooms and into our lives in substantial ways. Some of those friends and I and teachers and parents helped make a petition today and help draft some of the emails that I hear might have made it to your inbox right now. I'm sorry. Right now, well, I should say that petition launched at noon today. And right now it has 900 signatures from community members demanding that we do the work. I've heard that this discussion about curriculum change has gone on for something like three to five years. But I would implore you as our board to recognize both the pain and the hope in this moment and not let it by. I realized today that that pain lingered long enough to drive me to be this vulnerable 11 years after I graduated. And I'm also inspired today by the hope that drove my classmates and their parents and their teachers and their students to also care enough to sign their name to those values. So I look forward to passing that petition on. I think it's going to be live for a little bit. So that it might be your turn to adopt some of those ideals and hopefully make it right. That is my speech that I wrote down. Here for any other questions or comments or concerns or anything else.
Maya, thank you. I really commend you for joining us this evening because I think that this is an important conversation and certainly it's been on the forefront of our mind. And the district did come out with a message. And all we can say is that we stand in solidarity with you. This has been an initiative of ours for the past year. We've really emphasized equity in our schools. And we do have initiatives in place right now, but I'm going to pass it over to Mike because maybe Mike would like to add to that.
Hey Maya, how are you?
Hi, I'm doing, it's actually so nice to see you.
Brooklyn.
It's, well, it's busy. It's many things, but you know, we're doing all right.
I first just want to say I love you. I think it's amazing what you're doing. You came on and you reconnected with us. And I give you a ton of credit for coming on to give us feedback about making us better. There's, there's nothing more than we're committed to right now than to making changes so that people of color are heard and that listening is reflected in what we do. I will tell you, the last year's been, actually the last year and a half probably has really taken, has really changed my thoughts about a lot of things because I've heard a lot of personal stories. And I think that the part of the problem is, is that people aren't hearing personal stories. What they're, what they're hearing is rhetoric or they're hearing stuff from the far left or far right or in the middle and and this is about humanity more than anything else and it's about equality for all. And, and I will tell you, I'm going to speak to this at the end of the board meeting, but obviously it's not a Pittsburgh issue. It's an everyone issue. And so all of the superintendents in the county have been meeting to talk about how we can make a strong statement and action plan relative to equality for all. And, and it's about time. And so it's brave people like you. It's committed people like you that are coming back to advocate and I love you for that. And thank you for coming on tonight and I would love to stay in contact with you.
I would love that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. You're awesome. Have an awesome night.
You too.
Thank you for that.
Bye.
I would love for you to stay here, but.
Oh, I have to go, right?
I feel bad kicking you out now.
I was about to leave, but it looked like it took a little longer. Okay, bye everyone. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Amy, we have another, another person coming in and it is Thadah.
Hi, this is Thadah. How are you?
Great. How are you?
God.
If we could just get your address.
Of course. 18 Kurt Road, Pittsburgh, 14534.
Yep.
And your social security.
You won't go anywhere with that. So I just want to say I attended the senior parade this past Saturday and I thought it was amazing and awesome. I think it should be a tradition from here on out, but that wasn't my question. I just wanted to put that out there before brought up what I wanted to talk about. So I do want to thank you for that because that's probably the first time that I've seen both sides come together, the seniors and be able to actually see both graduating classes at the same time. So that was awesome. But my question here tonight, you know, and I want to thank Maya for bringing up her part of it, but we had a PTSA diversity and inclusion meeting last week. And I did email the board about this issue as well, but I just wanted to bring it up because I haven't heard anything back. We had a Sutherland student who came onto our committee, to our meeting and spoke about, you know, stickers that he had saw on the canal. They were, you know, neo-Nazi, white supremacy stickers. I know he came onto a town board meeting, Pittsburgh Town Board meeting, and then he also came onto our meeting. So I guess my question is, and he was actually pleading for community members and students to be educated on these so that, you know, they're aware of what's happening and what to do if they see it and what kind of things are out there. I guess my question is this. We tell our students if they see something to say something. We talk about the power of one. We talk about being an upstander. Now, if a student comes up in two different forums and is saying something, what are we doing in response? How are we educating people? How are we following through with them? I don't want him to get frustrated. I don't want him to think it's falling on deaf ears because he did the right thing. So I guess that's my question to you was how are we communicating and how are we following through? If we're telling kids to see something, say something, what are we as adults doing to follow through with that to make sure that everybody else is educated on that?
So Thadah, actually Mike did have an opportunity and reached out to that particular student as soon as you had expressed concern after the DI meeting. Mike, would you like to share anything?
Sure. It's a little bit hard. It's hard to share the details of the conversation, but I will tell you that I spoke with him. I thanked him. I asked him if there is anything that he needed from us or if there's anything he felt we could do. And I also asked him how he felt about attending different board meetings and and, and putting himself out there. I don't want to divulge the rest of the conversation. I really don't. I think it's a big conflict in my trust with the student. But I can tell you the student is doing extremely well now. I think he feels very supported by the school district. And I, I think that when we, anytime we put a student in front of large groups, especially when they're talking about a violent organization, that we need to be very cognizant that they have supports beyond those presentations. So I spoke with him at length about all of that and I think that we're in a good place, but I want you to know, since you asked, that I had a great conversation with him. I was concerned about him and I think he felt certainly very validated by the district and I think that my comments to him helped him alleviate some of the anxieties he has.
So I just wanted to add, I actually also called him and his mom before I came on to tell them that I was, I asked them if it would be okay to bring this up again. I think it's more as to the education piece that he was asking that was more widespread as to the community. So, you know, how are we notifying other people that this is out there? I know Bill Smith at a Pittsburgh Town Board meeting said he was going to follow up with you, Mr. Perro, to make that communication through the school district. So I was just, and I haven't seen anything as an education piece or a communication piece to the community in regards to the stuff that's going on in, in, you know, that, you know, we see. So that's, I think that's more the question.
Okay. Well, thank you. I think that hopefully what you've seen is three pieces of information come out from me about what's happening globally and locally and you'll hear a fourth this evening. And know that I've also followed up with a student and we all want to do the right thing here and gathering facts and information is is part of it and we want to be accurate in what we send out. And so as a school district, we are doing everything that we can to take care of our school community. Thank you.
Thanks, Thadah.
Amy, at this point, the, that meeting room is empty.
Okay. All right. So at this point, we will close public comment down and move on to the Board of Education reports. There's not a lot to report. There are a couple of updates that I would like to mention. One is the board presidents, I had mentioned in our last meeting that the board presidents of Monroe County School Boards have decided to continue our meetings beyond, really probably through July. And we have a guest speaker next week. Dr. Mendoza will be joining us, which is something that we typically don't do. We typically don't have a guest speaker, but in this case, many of the board presidents, like the superintendents, would like to be very informed as we enter into phasing back in and reopening our schools. So what does that look like? And some of the discussions also include high school graduations and celebrations. And as we all know, the executive orders change daily. So it's very important for the board presidents to stay abreast of any changes that are happening and also to hear from the perspective of our Department of Health regionally. So that is happening on the 10th. All the other committee meetings are finished for the year. The only other meeting report that I have under this category is I did receive a letter from the New York State Education Department asking if I would participate in a regional task force committee that's being designed for our region. And it's covering a wide variety of topics. And each person that's been asked to join this task force has been assigned a different bucket, if you will. And so just to share some of those buckets, we have a health and safety, digital equity access, budget fiscal, social emotional needs, special education, bilingual, multilingual, human resources, transportation, facilities, nutrition, teaching and learning, and the list goes on from there. But basically this regional task force is up to discuss what reopening schools will look like. So I have a scheduled meeting on the 15th of June and that's about a three-hour meeting, a Zoom meeting with others in our region. So I'll keep you updated as time goes on there. Dates to remember. As everyone knows, at this point, our budget vote and school board election now has been moved until the 16th of June. And Mike, I'm sure you're sharing the details of, of that, so I won't go further than that, other than it is the 16th of June. The 22nd of June is our next scheduled meeting. And that is it on meeting reports. So tonight we need to approve the annual vote and poll workers. If I may have a motion to approve. Irene and I have Val. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Financial report, Darren.
Pretty short tonight. I have before you a contract for SEI Design, your board-appointed architect, to start pre-refendum work for a future capital project. It's in the amount of $30,000, which is favorable compared to previous projects that we've done.
May I have a motion to approve? Thanks, Pete and Kim. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Darren. Human resource report, Mike.
First, for your consideration, as the professional report, please let me know if you have any questions.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thanks, Deb and Renee. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Second, for your consideration, this is a support staff report. Again, please let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, may I have a motion, please? I have Val and Irene. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Special education report, Elizabeth.
We have CSE and CPSC recommendations on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Superintendent's report, Mike.
At this time, there's no need for an executive session. There is a second reading on the consent agenda around participation in graduation ceremonies and activities as well as diploma and credential options for students with disabilities as well as special education, the district's plan. I would also like to note, a gift to the district from the Pittsburgh Education Foundation for just over $23, $23,000 for two 65-inch touch displays for Mendon and Sutherland High Schools.
Wow.
Which is another area that the foundation has significantly helped the school district. So I want to thank the Pittsburgh Education Foundation for that. Just want to, want to touch on just everything that we're going through. It's amazing on Saturday. So you can see my sunburn on my face if it's that close, half my face. So we had an amazing parade for our seniors on Saturday and the volunteers were tremendous. So first, I need to thank like, I need to thank the town, the village. I need to thank the fire department. I need to thank our communications department and our teachers who showed up on that day and our community who followed our rules. And I really reflected after that day about how this was an event that brought us together. And it did. It brought our community together big time. And how much needed that, that time was. It recognized our seniors who have sacrificed so much this year. They have given up all the things that everyone before them has experienced. So I think about our seniors. I'm not sure about all of you, but I think about when I was in high school, the senior ball was the big deal. And so you miss a senior ball and then you miss all of the spring events on top of that. And graduations in jeopardy. And our community came together in such a big way to support our students and our families. And, and that was fantastic. And it brought us together. And I'm hoping that the other thing that can bring us together is around this issue surrounding race and everything that we're seeing on TV. And if I could just have a minute, I would say that the realization of equality right now needs to be real. It needs to become real right now. It's, there's no reason for us to argue anymore about should there be equality or should there not be equality? There needs to be equality. And my family and I watch the news in the morning, sometimes together and sometimes we're fed up, but when we watch it and we look at protests and we look at rallies, we're all looking at each other and saying enough is enough. Right? I mean, enough is enough. I think about going back to 19, or I'm sorry, 1776. And if I were to paraphrase, it's, it's, we hold these truths to be self-evident that all men and women are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That was 1776. But then we see protests around the globe. And I think that what we have to start to do is understand that what these protests represent are anger and injustice and racial violence. And people are demanding change and we should demand change. We've seen too many examples of how not all people are treated equal. That this is nothing more. And I don't want to downplay that statement. It, it's a humanity issue. And we've seen oppressive systems and structures towards people of color and other marginalized groups. And it's time today to do less arguing. A lot less arguing. And a lot less jockeying for position, a lot less manipulating on both sides. A lot less being defensive. And to listen to the stories of people of color who have endured racism and oppression. So many of us on the Board of Education and including myself have listened to those stories. They're not made up. They've been, they've been kept quiet. And, and we've heard them. And we're a tiny part or a fraction of, of the world. So it's time to start thinking about shaping, not thinking about, but shaping our mindsets to that of loving one another. Think about that ideal. If we all loved one another, if we respected one another and we created systems and structures that gave all people equal opportunity like was stated in 1776 and creating that equal opportunity all of the time. So everything is compounded. We're in the midst everything is compounded. We're we're in the midst of a pandemic. Uh, we're in the midst of job losses. We're in the midst of mental health decline. We're in the midst of protests. And I I'm, I stay very steadfast in the in the in the notion that it's our collective responsibility to ensure that we, when we come out of this, because we will, that we've become better from it. Every single one, we've all been through terrible times. Um, and some more terrible than others. And historically, some way more terrible than others. But we need to come out of this as better human beings. And and it needs to be evident in our actions. And so we heard from Maya tonight. I think we all just need to understand uh, that we need to do more. What we're doing right now is not good enough for people of color especially. What we're doing right now is not good enough for people of marginalized groups especially. So when I, when I got into this profession, when I started as a teacher, boy, my my thoughts were, every student in my class is going to be treated with respect and love and equal, and whatever they needed, I was gonna give them. And that's no different than our teachers that are in front of our kids now. Um, but we need more, we need more support. We need more structure. Um, we we need, we need to make sure that we don't revisit this again in the future. I I would also share that superintendents across the county, we meet three times a week. And two of the three times that we meet are around our commitment, uh, to end racism. And we've put together a statement letter uh, that we will be sharing with the communities and the media very soon. Because it it doesn't, it can't be one district. It can't be two districts. It needs to be all of our districts. It needs to be all of our people. It needs to be all of our families. That will practice the art of humanity. Uh, that will bring equality to all people regardless of their color. That's what humanity is, and that's what we need to bring to our community in Pittsburgh and and throughout the United States and throughout the world. So I look forward to these conversations. Um, and my hope is that, well, I will tell you that it's not my hope. My commitment is that they're not conversations, that they're actionable. That we all look at, um, our own systems and structures and policies like we have been doing for the last year. Um, and and I would say that we've, we've, I'm saddened by the by the the timing of this, where we gotta leave in March. That's been our focus. Uh, it'll continue to be our focus, and it'll continue to continue to be more robust. And regardless of what's happening beyond us, in Pittsburgh, there's gonna be no rule for racism. There's gonna be no role for inequality. And so all of us together have to keep each other accountable for this, period. Families need to understand, our community needs to understand that there's no role for racism in Pittsburgh. There's, and and beyond that, there's no rule for putting down any marginalized group. So we've been through heck and back, uh, the last thirteen weeks. When we come back, we're gonna be better, we're gonna be stronger, we're gonna be more committed. Uh, in in no way, shape, or form should any student at any time ever, ever feel, um, that they've been put down because of their race, um, or their gender, or their sexuality, or anything. But in particular, right now, since we're talking about race, in no way, shape, or form, will kids be um, subject to what the stories have told me over the last couple of years. Uh, we you, we will be a better district, we'll be a stronger district, and we'll be better for it. And we need to continue, um, our work with bringing people together instead of separating people. So for anyone that's listening this tonight, and I'm not sure if there is five people, or twenty people, or eighty people, or a hundred people, but for the people um, that are out there listening, know that our commitment um, to equality has never been stronger. So now I feel bad going to other areas, but I wanted to put that out there first, um, in understanding that, um, this the significance, um, this has had on on so many lives. And and we're we're gonna be better from it. I promise you that. So recently, I'm shifting gears. Uh, we've had several executive orders from the governor. And again, um, wanna share, not knowing who's out there. The governor issues executive orders and then the media picks up on the executive orders, and then they post in their, whatever it is, if it's a newspaper, website, where, whatever. The unfortunate part is that after an executive order, uh, there's no guidance. And so we all have to wait. All schools have to wait for guidance, um, from the state, or we have to wait for guidance from S E D. And, um, so I'll start with the executive order, uh, for voting. The DNC released and other vehicles released, uh, that there was, um, information about voting being postponed. Uh, we couldn't come out publicly with that until late this afternoon, until the executive order was released. And then when an executive order is released, then we all have to have an interpretation of the executive order. Um, then we have to have an interpretation of any of the guidelines. And and so it's, it's a long process once there's a declaration for the governor. So I'll be very clear right now, um, about the executive order regarding voting. So tomorrow after five, no ballots can go out, period. So if anyone requests ballots for us to send to them tomorrow after five, we cannot send them to them. And for those of you that may be skeptical of that and wonder how is that possible? When the governor does an executive order, if he doesn't include those details in this new executive order, we have to default back to the last executive order. And and so the governor is really putting us in this really tough position. So again, after tomorrow at five P M, no ballots can go out to anyone. Uh, there will be no more hand delivery. Um, so you cannot drop your ballots off at Parker Road Middle School after five P M tomorrow. Uh, the other thing that's important to note is that we will accept ballots until June sixteenth at five o'clock. And the last thing I would mention along these lines is that nothing in the language uh, talks about a revote, which means that we would have to go back to the previous executive order, which would mean making contingency plans that are much more difficult. And for Pittsburgh, that's about four million dollars of cuts. Um, and and I've seen, um, a lot of different posts about a lot of different things about, um, voting yes or no, but I think that people just, um, need to understand the reality of what four million dollars of cuts would, um, would do along with rolling cuts throughout the year. There's also an executive order, um, allowing summer camps, and so a a big bone of contention then had been, and actually it was an exciting thing, saying, great, now we can bring our extended school year students in over the summer. Which has been probably one of the most rewarding experiences for me as a superintendent to watch, is our um, students with, uh, um, I E Ps um, work throughout the summer to become the best that they can be. And, um, and I've been talking with some parents about this and and asking them to, um, advocate with me, with the governor. And so it came out with this great declaration. Um, but now there's zero guidance from S E D. And I'll be very forthright with with the whole community. Um, S E D will probably, and S E D stands for State Education Department. They probably will not come out with any guidance. Uh, because the governor creates, um, the guidance. And we're waiting for that. So even though the governor declared that there's summer camps that are allowed, we have no guidance. We have no understanding of what the guidelines are, um, how many students in a room, um, what the parameters are to to have this. Um, and in addition, uh, with all of these executive orders, we're losing people. So we're losing, um, people that want to teach and work in, summer school with our students with special needs have now found other jobs. And so we're worried about bringing people back in. We're worried about how are we gonna transport kids back and forth from school? When there's no guidance, um, and and I hate saying this because I I but but I'll share this as a fact, that the governor is is not listening at all to educators. He's not listening to boards of education. He's not listening to superintendents. Uh, we have given him our recommendations, everything from the voting, saying, don't do the the ballot voting because you're gonna run out of envelopes. And what happened? They ran out of envelopes. So then what happens? You you move it back, and then you put everyone in turmoil. Uh, to, um, the extended school year, um, and and a lot in between. He he, he's simply not listening. And my my concern is that our local control of our schools have been lost. And to be quite frank, the local control regionally has been lost. And 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 making our conversations with everything from the county executive to um, Dr. Mendoza and and others complicated. Uh, because we we have no control. And I hear from people that they're upset about, they're upset about the budget. They're upset about, um, um, everything from that to, uh, not having our kids be able to come in for summer school, or they're upset about, um, not having year-end celebrations and um, or their, whatever, whatever it is. Our hands are a hundred percent tight. Our school board can't override in a policy, any of this. I can't override anything. From the beginning, we were told that we have a a regional group that will assist uh, in making recommendations to open the county in different phases and making regional decisions. And we have yet to see that. Uh, we have, um, the latest graduation information that just came out, I think yesterday, or maybe two days ago. It said, uh, the executive order said we can't exceed a hundred fifty people, which makes zero sense to me. If we were to have a graduation at Frontier Field with a hundred and fifty people, uh, there'd be, um, spaces that are ridiculous between people. There's no parameters, um, in these executive orders. There's no understanding of venues or nuances or um, anything that takes in educational considerations. So that's concerning to me. And so I I I worry about, um, these executive orders and how they reflect on us. So if you are listening to this, or you will listen to this, we're trying daily, um, by the minute, uh, nonstop. One, to try to make sense of these executive orders. Two, to try to project what the guidelines will state. And then three, deal with the reality that what we want them to state have not been stated. So I get it. Um, we're in a a terrible COVID crisis. But we're also in a position where we have zero control. Um, and we can't act. We cannot act without an executive order approval. And so I would ask for everyone and anyone that wants to share anything that I stated with the governor um, in opposition of what he's suggesting, uh, to please, uh, email him directly. There's, um, there's a time when we just need direction. And 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 we're waiting week by week on these executive orders. And then and then we're going to look like the people that don't know what we're doing when he says in August, he makes a decision about schools. Uh, and we weren't anticipating the direction he went. So, um, I think people just need to understand that we're looking at so many different scenarios, so many different situations. And all we want is clarity, um, and we we just don't have the time for clarity. So what we're doing, uh, is we're meeting daily um, about, uh, six different scenarios for next year. And we're spending a lot of taxpayer money processing through each scenario. So when the governor does make a decision, we will be as prepared as possible. I can go on forever about our frustration, my frustration with this. But I'll close with with this, I think, is that I saw the best of our community together at the senior parade. Um, I saw parents in their cars crying. I saw kids at the top of their cars smiling and cheering and loving being in front of the community. Um, I saw our staff supporting our kids in really deep and precious ways. Um, and I promise you this. You're in Pittsburgh. When when you moved to Pittsburgh, you made a really good choice. Because we we love our kids. We love our families. Um, we're dealing with a lot of difficult things right now. Um, we're dealing with a lot of difficult, not only difficult things, but people who have a lot of different perspectives and how they should be handled. Um, and some forcefully, and some very cordially. And we're taking it all in. And we're all living and learning right now through this process. But know this. We are Pittsburgh, and we are gonna come out of this. And and how we do that um, should represent who we are. And so when I think about the 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 this vote that's coming up, and as a superintendent, I'm not allowed to talk about swaying votes. But I can talk about facts. So the vote that's presented to the 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 community is one that would allow us to come out of this, um, and land on our feet. Um, because if it if if it doesn't go, um, we will be looking at significant reductions in a lot of areas that will not allow us to land on our feet, which would cause a lot of what we've been contending with to to drag on for a lot longer. We want to hit head on mental health issues. Um, we want to hit head on race issues. We want to hit on rigorous, um, authentic, engaging, um, experiences for our kids. We want our kids to leave Pittsburgh with their heads up um, and feel proud. Everyone, every one of our kids to feel proud to be graduates of Pittsburgh. And and I ask for you just to understand that there's a lot um, of, um, crises that are going on around us. And and we are doing the very best we can to mitigate and and to process through them in a in a way that shows a sense of integrity. Um, and and in a way that also respects you. So with that, um, Amy, I thank you for, uh, the superintendent's So with that, um, Amy, I thank you for uh the superintendent's being able to babble on for a while. And um. I just hope everyone's well, um, and and know that we'll get through this and. Um, we'll be better on the other side, I promise.
Thanks, Mike. There's an awful lot to cover and I think that you summarized it beautifully and I I think that um. You know, it's just a lot to digest for all of us, so thank you for that. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Kim and Pete? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. So just to piggyback off of Mike a little bit because the board would like to say something. Um, as we have in the past few weeks. In the past three months, we've really been talking about and and have been heavily focused on keeping our staff and students. Safe during the COVID nineteen pandemic as we should. But um, I'd like to personally on behalf of the board. E- extend a thank you to Maya for stepping forward this evening. And calling in and and providing feedback to the board, we are listening. Um, and we have received quite a few emails, so we will continue to listen. But tonight, it's it's very clear that we need to shift our attention to the senseless death of George Floyd. Uh, we're once again saddened and angered. By the stark and tragic reminders of racial inequity that persists in our society. Pittsburgh Schools stands together in solidarity. With those members of our community who feel the weight of oppression. Systemic racism, hate. And a failing system of justice. We'll continue our work to make Pittsburgh Schools an agent of change. For all who call our district and our community home. We look forward to our ongoing commitment of building an equitable learning environment for all. Which celebrates and leverages differences in all forms. We recognize that this can't happen until we root out all racist and hate-filled behaviors, words and actions. Throughout our history, Pittsburgh Schools has leveraged education through compassion to bring our community together. It's our mission to help us emerge from this challenge as a stronger, united community. As a Board of Education, we want every student, family and staff member of color to know that we are here. To provide support to each of you and to say that we stand with you. Please be safe, stay well, and we look forward to reuniting as one Pittsburgh very soon. So with that, if anyone else has any old business? No? New business? Mike?
So I know this is not a time for the superintendent to chime in for new business, but. Um, I think that the community should know that tonight is Kim McCloskey's birthday. And that she has been on the board for several decades. Um, and has uh done amazing work for community, for kids, for. So many people and I just want to wish Kim a happy birthday tonight.
Would you like to sing?
No, I I would refer not prefer not to.
Anyone would like to sing, they can, they can sing.
Thank you so much.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Several decades was not very kind, though, I have.
It was more than one.
Yeah, more than one, more than two.
And she's only forty-five.
That's right. Thirty-nine, thirty-nine, thirty-nine.
Another executive order.
Oh, boy, here we go. All right.
Microphones off.
With that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, I've got Ted and then I had Pete's arm up. Ted and Pete, all in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Good night, everyone. Be safe.
Night.
Night, everyone.
Thanks, Mike. See you, guys.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.